Okay, good evening and welcome to the July 15th, 2019 meeting of the Planning Commission. Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Berman.
Present.
Vice Chair Rubenstein. Here. Chair Clifford.
Present.
Commissioner Nivlin. Here. Commissioner Kraske.
Here.
Okay, moving on to the salute to the flag. Commissioner Nivlin, could I get you to do that?
Yes, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, on to approval of minutes for June...oh, excuse me, I'm skipping ahead one. Approval of the order of agenda. Commissioner Nivlin?
I'll move approval of the order of agenda.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Rubenstein?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Now on to approval of the minutes for June 17th, 2019. Do I have a motion or any comments? Commissioner Nivlin?
I'll move approval of the minutes.
Commissioner Rubenstein?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote. Okay, the minutes have been approved. Designating liaison for the city council meeting, and I see that we don't need one, so we'll skip past that. And now we'll go on to oral communications. This portion of the agenda is available to the public to address the Planning Commission on any issue within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda. The time allowed for any speaker will be three minutes. If anybody would like to speak, please come forward. I'm not seeing anybody, so I'm going to close oral communications and move on to the next thing. Consent items, we have none, so we're going to go right to a new public hearing for site development permit PSD 840-19 for construction of an 855 square foot, second-story addition to an existing 1,752 square foot, one-story, single-family residence on a 5,120 square foot, non-conforming lot at 206 Calaveras Ave. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Senior Planner Christian Murdock. The project for your consideration tonight is a site development permit to allow an 855 square foot, second-story addition to an existing one-story, single-family residence on a non-conforming lot. The project site is 5,120 square feet, which exceeds the 5,000 square foot minimum lot size, but is non-conforming due to lot width in that the site is 49.6 feet wide, just shy of the 50-foot minimum lot width. The property is located in the R1 zoning district and in the low-density residential general plan designation. The project meets the city's code requirements, specifically lot coverage and the existing side, front, and rear setbacks are maintained for the proposed additions. A covered front porch, front entry porch is proposed, which will extend into the required 15-foot front setback, but no farther than an existing three-foot overhang, which runs the length of the existing front of the home. A rear deck is proposed off the second-story addition, however substantial side and rear setbacks are maintained to adjacent properties, and no privacy concerns have been brought to staff's attention to date. The project has been designed to minimize mass and bulk and reduce impacts on neighboring properties and the existing street scape. Because the second-story addition has been setback substantially from the front of the lot towards the rear of the site, the proposed second-story addition is set into the roofline of the existing one-story residence. A low five-to-12 roofline is proposed, a low five-to-12 pitch roofline is proposed. Low ceiling heights of nine feet are proposed for the second-story addition, and the overall proposed height of 26 feet 10 inches is well below the maximum height limit. Lastly, the materials and colors would match the existing earth tone colors of the residence. In conclusion, because the project meets the city code requirements, as well as achieves consistency with the city's design guidelines, staff recommends Planning Commission approval of the proposed project as conditioned. Thank you.
Any questions for staff? Commissioner Bigstick.
Sure, so this one's more for my education, because I'm still learning the basics of a few things. So just so I'm very clear in my head, what triggers the commission reviewing an addition to a house? It is that we're analyzing an accommodation for a non-conformity of some sort, right?
That's correct in this case. There are any number of different triggers which could cause the commission to need to review and issue permits for an addition. In this case, it's because the lot is non-conforming to the zoning standards in that it's less than 50 feet wide at the front setback line, which is the point of measurement for lot width. It's just under 50 feet.
So under other circumstances in which there's no glaring non-conformities, an addition might not come up before us for review?
That's correct, and very typically they would not. The vast majority of additions in the city are allowed to be approved with the building permit only.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any further questions for staff? Seeing none, the applicant can come up. You'll have 10 minutes to present your project.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Javier Chavarria with JZ Engineering. And as the staff very nicely expressed, our project is very consistent with the neighborhood. It meets just about every zoning standard, and because of a very minor technicality of our code, we're here. But we did our best to design something that is very similar to what has been done in the neighborhood. I've done two other additions in the area that have turned out really nice. Before we went ahead with the details of our design, we talked to the neighbors. The property owners are here, and they actually have some letters of support from the neighbors. So overall, I think the addition will be an enhancement to the neighborhood. As I said, I thank your staff for doing a thorough and clear report, and if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer anything that you may come up with.
And Commissioner Nivlin?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to clarify, these letters of support, I don't remember seeing them. Are they actually in the staff report, or are those something that the property owners brought with them? I just wanted to clarify that.
Staff has not received a copy of the letters.
Okay, well, perhaps those would be good to include in the record if that's what the applicant had in mind.
Any other questions for the applicant? I just have one comment, actually. For the lack of like four and a half inches, you're here. It really is a small deviation. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this item? Could you...have you filled out a card yet? You have a card. Would you hand it to staff and come on up?
I'd like to have this one. Or next.
Okay, the next item.
Okay, we're done? Okay, apparently that person is going to be here for the next item. Okay, Javier, if you would like, you have another three minutes if you have anything else you would like to say.
Wish you a wonderful summer, and I hope I see you before the end of the summer here.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Bringing it back to the commission, closing the public hearing. Any questions, comments, thoughts? Commissioner Nivlin?
I just wanted to note that I thought that the staff report did a very good job of laying out sort of the issues at hand here. I agree that what we were dealing with, and it's been said a couple of times, doesn't really matter if I agree, but the fact of the matter is that it's a very minor non-conformity that we're talking about here. It doesn't appear to be particularly...well, it's immodest. It's modest, in my view, what we're talking about doing, or what's being proposed here. I think we ought to go ahead and just approve it.
Okay, anybody else? Is there anybody that would like to make a motion? Commissioner Kraske?
Sure, to make a motion? I move the Planning Commission find the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, approve site development permit PSD 840-19 by adopting the attached resolution, including conditions of approval in Exhibit A, and incorporate all maps and testimony into the record by reference.
Okay, Commissioner Bigstick?
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote. Congratulations, it passed unanimously. You have an approved project. Anyone aggrieved by the actions of the Planning Commission have 10 calendar days to appeal this. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to the next item. The next item is an amendment of the general plan, land use designation from medium to density to high-density residential, amendment of the zoning classification from R2 to family residential to R3 multiple-family residential, construction of a 1,398 square foot, two-story, single-family residence on an existing 2,250 square foot, non-conforming lot, and exceptions from the two-car garage off-street parking standards for a single-family resident by providing one uncovered off-street parking space on a vacant lot known as Lot 37 of Block 1. The revised map, Salida Beach subdivision, located on the south side of Salida Ave, 325 feet west of the intersection of Palmetto Avenue and Salida Ave.
Salada.
Salada, excuse me!
We're Pacifica, Salada!
Salada, thank you very much for your correction.
Beach Boulevard, Salada!
Got it.
We got it, thank you.
Thank you!
Can I have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Senior Planner Christian Murdock. The item before you relates to a recommendation to city council on a general plan amendment and rezoning of the project site, as well as consideration of approval of development permits for construction of a single-family residence with a parking exception. The general plan amendment and rezoning are known as legislative items and may be referred to as such during tonight's hearing. Tonight's proposal includes changing the land use designation in the general plan from medium-density residential to high-density residential, and the zoning classification of the site from R2 to family residential to R3 multiple-family residential. The proposed single-family residence would have approximately 1,400 square feet of floor area, three bedrooms, three bathrooms, and would measure approximately 23 and 1/2 feet tall. The project would include a detached shed and additional area accessed on the left of the building for storage. The project would have one off-street parking space provided in a driveway, and would preserve sufficient space to park one car on-street in front of the property. The project site is an existing lot measuring 25 feet wide and 90 feet deep, with a lot area of 2,250 square feet. It is one of four similarly situated lots which are contiguous along this portion of Salada Ave, but which have three different owners. The subject owner owns only one of the lots. This lot is 25 feet narrower, 10 feet shallower, and less than 50% of the lot area of a standard conforming lot. The existing substandard conditions of the lot have presented unique challenges to its development as outlined in the staff report. These challenges include the lack of development potential under the existing general plan and zoning designations, achieving full compliance with off-street and on-street parking standards, and arriving at an architectural design which is consistent with the design guidelines. More specifically, the density which would result from building on the site would be 19 units per acre, which exceeds the 10 to 15 units per acre specified in the existing medium-density residential land use designation in the general plan. The lot area is below the minimum 2,900 square feet per dwelling unit required in the R2 zoning district, and the 25-foot width of the lot would present practical difficulties with constructing the two-car side-by-side garage required for single-family residences. If constructed, the house built on the site would have its access door on the side of the structure, likely with only a three-foot pathway to access it. The entire front of the house would be dominated by the garage, and the resulting driveway to access the garage would also eliminate all on-street parking in front of the project site, which conflicts with the city's parking standards. A two-car garage would also result in little to no landscaping in the front yard, which is inconsistent with zoning principles. Regarding the legislative items, while it may seem out of place for such a small site to be designated high-density residential and R3 multiple-family residential, the proposed designations are in fact appropriate for the development based on the very small size of the site. Despite their names, these designations would result only in allowable construction of a single-family residence on the site because of density limitations, minimum lot area per dwelling unit standards, and provisions in the city's non-conforming zoning provisions which limit sites with 3,999 square feet of lot area or less to development of a single-family residence only. Even in the case of consolidation of two or more of the four contiguous lots in the future, and potential future approval of the same legislative items for one or more of the other lots, the density standards of the high-density residential designation and the minimum lot area per dwelling unit standards of the R3 zone would still limit development to not more than four total dwelling units. In other words, one unit per each of the existing lots. However, in the case of future lot consolidation, the development could come in the form of duplex, triplex, or four-unit apartment unit, depending on the combined lot area. Thus, the change in designations would not intensify the development density of this area even upon future approval of the same legislative actions for the other three contiguous lots. Instead, granting the legislative items would resolve the current inconsistencies which are preventing the subject site from developing. The applicant's proposal has gained staff's recommendation of approval because it is a reasonable compromise, in staff's opinion, which balances the various competing zoning provisions, which are difficult or unfeasible to satisfy on the site due to its narrowness and small size, and because the project results in a pleasing design aesthetic in staff's assessment, which is consistent with the traditional character of the West Sharp Park neighborhood, which historically consisted of small cottages. On the topic of parking specifically, staff's assessment when balancing the competing parking provisions for off-street and on-street parking was to preserve the additional on-street parking space which would be available to all residents and visitors in the neighborhood rather than removing the curb area to allow construction of a driveway with a second private space available only to the occupants of the subject site. For the reasons specified in the staff report and summarized this evening, staff recommends that the Planning Commission makes a recommendation of approval to the city council of the legislative items consisting of the general plan amendment and rezoning, and further approves the requested development permits, including the parking exception, which would enable construction of a single-family residence on the subject site. Any action to approve the development permits would take effect only upon future enactment of the legislative items by the city council and certification of an amendment to the city's local coastal program by the California Coastal Commission to incorporate those changes. Staff is available to answer any of the commission's questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Bigstick?
So you have basically two questions. The first is, we're basically, we're looking at the one lot, but while looking at the one lot, there's a description of those other four lots, all of which are about the same size. So my first question was just, would it make sense if we were to do this, if city council is to do this, to recommend that they rezone all four of the lots R3? What's...would there be a benefit to doing that, or is it a thing that could be done? Or is there a reason specifically why that was considered and decided? Nope.
Sure. I think we would agree that a comprehensive approach to this area would be preferable. However, that takes staff resources and work, as well as outreach and coordination with the property owners in many cases. When this project was presented, it was only the one property owner that was interested in pursuing development, and in light of that, we didn't feel like we had the ability or the direction or the resources to take on a very site-specific planning process. With that in mind, we are undertaking the Sharp Park specific plan process, and we are aware of this and perhaps other vacant sites in Sharp Park that should get a closer look to ensure that the land use regulations fit with the existing lot pattern as well as the desired type and intensity of development in the neighborhood.
Cool, thank you. So my other question regarding the parking. A lot of the houses on that street, I think I counted like seven of them, had one-car garages, especially Five Salada, which is on the north side closer to Beach Boulevard, seemed to be an ideal example of one-car garage. There's clearly enough space on the street to park. But I didn't see much discussion in the staff report as to the consideration of a one-car garage solution. Could you maybe elaborate on that?
Certainly. So I think it was staff's assessment that any garage on a site so small would result in the garage dominating the design of the structure. I think many observers would reach that conclusion in looking at the homes that exist in the neighborhood. With that in mind, I think it was our assessment that in many cases, people aren't using their garages for parking in the first instance, and so with a garage typically serving a storage function for very many people in this community, that providing ample storage area in the form of a shed and a secondary storage area built into the side of the structure would probably result in sufficient storage needs, which likely would have been accommodated in the garage, and to provide for an architectural design which best reflects examples of the cottage-style architecture that existed in the neighborhood for many decades since its original development. And so with that in mind, if you accept the argument that garages in many, if not most cases, are used for storage rather than parking, you're resulting with one parking space in the garage space fronting that garage. And so in balancing, of course, the strict zoning provisions as well as design guidelines, it was staff's assessment that the optimal outcome would be to allow parking in the driveway, as would be the case even with a one-car garage, provide for storage in some other location which is less dominant visually and functionally on the site, and then attempt to preserve the one-car on-street space for anybody's use rather than a second driveway space for private use only.
Makes sense, thank you.
Commissioner Nivlin?
Thank you. Just looking at the subject site and adjacent vacant lots figure in the staff report, it looks like the subject site there on Salada is, it's got adjacent vacant lots on either side, and I recognize there isn't any actual requirement that somebody tried to acquire an adjacent lot, but curious about whether or not staff is aware of any efforts that were made to acquire one of those vacant lots on either side, which perhaps would have made for a less cramped and constrained project.
Certainly. So I think you can infer from the fact that this project came in in 2017, we've spent a significant amount of time working with the applicant to try to explore different design alternatives and outcomes for the site. This is the third design iteration that the applicant has put together, and in staff's opinion, the best outcome that could result on the site. We asked about acquiring or swapping ownership, for instance, of other sites to allow those to more easily be consolidated. We inquired about shared driveway easements and the like, which perhaps could have allowed for more efficient use of the site. In all those cases, the applicant explained that it either wasn't feasible, he wasn't able to reach agreement with the neighbors, or it wouldn't result in a significant improvement in the design of the project, at least in his assessment. And so with the limitations of staff's ability to look at the project before it, with the property that's included in the application, we had no tools available to us at this time to force or really strongly incentivize that consolidation, and I think the applicant can probably elaborate more as well on what conversations he may have had with the adjacent owners.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? I have one. What is the standard depth of a driveway?
So the standard depth of a driveway in the, in really any of the city's zoning districts, R1, R2, or R3, is 20 feet. That is an increased setback from the front property line to the face of the driveway, greater than what the typical front setback is to the building, which is typically 15 feet. So the extra five feet, as we understand it, as it has been written for many years in the zoning standards, is to allow parking in the driveway for the full length of a vehicle. And so in this case, sufficient accommodation was made, in staff's opinion, I believe 18 feet for the front setback, which is not quite 20 feet, but certainly complies with other dimensions set forth for off-street parking in the zoning standards.
Okay.
And complies with the front setback requirement for the building.
Okay. My only question around that is, how do we make sure that they don't have a vehicle parked in the driveway that actually blocks the sidewalk? Because there are vehicles that are bigger than 18 feet long.
Sure, I'm not sure that we can assure that with 18, I don't know, hopefully with 20 feet we can, but perhaps there are big vehicles or vehicles with trailers attached or some other configuration I'm not thinking of. You know, more of a front setback would result in less of a rear yard and could present complications with providing adequate storage space. So the applicant would have to, I think, give some consideration to how he may reconfigure the site, but I think it may technically be feasible if it was the commission's interest to increase that from 18 feet to 20 feet without adversely impacting the project.
Is it possible to make a condition of approval that they have a sign that no car larger than 18 feet park in this driveway?
Well, I think perhaps it's possible. It would be unusual, it's not something I'm aware of.
This is an unusual project.
Considering before, it may be better if there's concern to look at, you know, a site design measure such as increasing the front setback to give perhaps greater certainty that that's the case. I'm not sure how enforceable it would be to tell an owner that he or she cannot have a vehicle beyond a certain overall length, for example.
I'm not telling them, I wouldn't be telling them that they couldn't have a bigger vehicle. I'm just saying that if they had a bigger vehicle, they couldn't park it in the driveway.
Understood, and that's an important distinction. It would render the space empty perhaps at that point rather than increasing the front setback, which may provide that greater assurance of getting the vehicle off the street, but I understand the point. We would have to consider that further.
I guess a follow-up question would be, what do the municipal codes say about covering up the sidewalk in front of your house with your vehicle?
I don't know the relevant municipal code provision offhand. I would imagine it would implicate an encroachment in the public right-of-way, which would be impermissible and would incommode the public's use of the public right-of-way by blocking the sidewalk, for example.
So the code enforcement or the police or somebody could enforce that if somebody were troubled by having to get out, walk around the car and...
Assuming it's a violation, which I cannot confirm right now, I think perhaps Director Waremeister is looking for a relevant code section, but assuming that it was a violation, the police department would enforce that because it's in the public right-of-way.
Thank you very much for your trouble, your taking the time to answer my rather funny questions. Okay, any other questions for staff? I'm not seeing any. Would the applicant like to come up? You'll have 10 minutes. You can address the commission.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Brian Brinkman, one of the co-applicants on the project, along with Mike Penisi, who's here tonight. I'd like to first thank you for your time this evening. As Christian mentioned, we originally had a hearing scheduled in December of 2017 for a home until the discrepancies in the general plan and zoning code were discovered. Since then, we've worked diligently with Christian on trying to come up with a design concept that we felt was most beneficial to the neighborhood, met as many of the city's codes and ordinances as possible, and contributed significantly to the neighborhood architecturally. Along with the planning staff, we analyzed the surrounding neighborhoods and all the different configurations of the homes there in order to get a feel for what we thought would best fit in the neighborhood and be the most beneficial for it. With the requested permits tonight, we feel that we have done that. As Christian just explained well now, by eliminating the garage, we were able to create a nice inviting front porch and front yard space that really helps the house connect to the community, and without losing any parking spaces overall, while also maintaining one at the street for the community's use. We also observed that, as Christian said, a lot of people use their garage for storage rather than parking. So as he mentioned, we created the storage, a very functional storage building in the back, and we also maximized the space under the stairs for more storage as well. We believe that with the joint design effort with planning staff, that the, we've created a very, very nice home, and that the design should speak for itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Bigstick?
Hi. Good evening, welcome.
Thanks.
So you're personally planning on living in this residence?
I'm sorry?
You're planning on living in this residence? You're planning on living in this residence?
No.
Okay. I'll only slightly adjust my storytelling. Usually I reserve my anecdotes for the end during deliberation, but in this case, this seemed like the appropriate time. So when I first arrived to this planet for the first three years or so of my life, I think, if I've got it squared away, I keep walking the neighborhoods trying to figure out exactly, I think it was 58 Santa Rosa that I lived at. And my parents owned this older Dodge Dart model. This is in the 1980s, so presumably it was a 70s something Dodge Dart, bright red. And they did not use the garage space, as has been indicated, many people do not use the garage space. And in my young recollection, I thought to myself, well, the silver bits around the red bits, I could have sworn they were almost as rust-colored as the red of the car itself after spending about three years living in that place. So I called mom. I said, hey, is my memory faulty or not? And she said, no, after we were done living on Santa Rosa, that was a very rusty car since we never used the garage space. So it just occurred to me, and you're not the one who's going to be living there, I appreciate that, and I appreciate you've probably had a conversation, hopefully with whomever might be living there, or maybe that's down the road. If that's not a conversation you're capable of having at this juncture, or it is a conversation you've had at this juncture, I just want to make sure fully that conversation is had, are you certain that whomever is going to be living there won't maybe want some relief from the perpetual salt winds that will be coming off that ocean to whatever detriment of their car might be? Admittedly, neither myself nor my mother were able to figure out whether or not a modern building of cars maybe is a preventative measure these days, but I thought it was a genuine enough concern to raise it now.
I don't really want to answer that question. We both live in this town, me and Brian. I have cars that I don't park in the garage. I see them all up and down the street, and that just, I think nowadays, things are a little bit different than they were back then. I know multiple neighbors that live in the neighborhood that don't park in the garage and don't value their car the way maybe they used to. But again, it's just, that sounds like an opinion. It's a real hard question to answer.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Rubenstein?
I think that was my...
Oh, it's you. Commissioner Nebelen?
Thank you. Actually, I just wanted to take the opportunity to ask you the same kind of question I had run past staff about any efforts that you might have made to engage in some of those various alternatives or options that sort of were kicked around, apparently relating to maybe trying to acquire, you know, an adjacent site or something that might have made for us not having to, again, engage in what actually is a fairly significant effort to change general plan, land use designations, rezone, and ultimately build a project that's somewhat site-constrained. I think that you all have done a really good job with the space you've got. And so none of this is to suggest any particular outcome in terms of where I would land on the deliberations, but what do you have to say to that?
I mean, there's been discussion, but the property owners of the adjacent sites have envisions of developing their properties for themselves someday, so there's no opportunity for that right now.
Okay.
Commissioner Berman?
Just a few quick questions. So then is your intent, do you have a buyer in mind, or is your intent to lease it out?
I don't know that we've totally determined that. We don't have a buyer yet, no.
Okay. You mentioned that the adjacent property owners do intend to develop for themselves in the future. Just kind of looking through the plans, I really like the model of the house. I noticed that each side has, I believe it's a glass siding or large window. What's your plan for privacy in the future if the adjacent owners plan on developing? Because it seems to look over what, it's on the second story.
In the back, well, there's a covered porch in the back at the second story.
So, oh, I see, I see. So it's all exterior?
Correct. We have glass. It's kind of enclosed just the back, but the two sides are open.
So it's like a sunroom?
In a way, yeah.
Okay. That's all I have for now. Thanks.
Any further questions for the applicant? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. I have a few cards here. Tanya Tan- Tender? Is it Tender? You'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Tanya, and I live across the street, about two doors down from the proposed site. And we have three adults, a 16-year-old daughter that will be getting a car soon, who will be parking on the street. And our son is turning 15 this year, so another car on our family on that street. Currently, there is no parking on Salata Ave on the weekend. The tourists come, if you happen to move your car, you're parking a few blocks down. So I don't see how one parking spot is going to be sufficient, especially when they're not living in this house, thinking that they're going to have the streets of that house. And then there's three more houses proposed to be built in the future. I'm afraid the same kind of situation's going to happen. We already have no parking on the street. And across the street, the girl got her driver's license with the car, and now the parking's worse because of this one other teenager. And next to us is another teenager who's going to also be driving. So as the neighborhood, the streets growing with teenagers, it's making the problem worse. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin O'Rourke? You'll also have three minutes. In fact, every speaker will have three minutes.
Okay, so I live across the street from the project in a house that currently has a one-car garage, and it also has a driveway that's not long enough to actually put a car in there. One thing that would make me move out of this house is because of the parking situation. We'd put a car in the garage, believe it or not. I mean, people do do it, and also when the parking gets tighter and tighter, people will be putting it in the garage, and they'll be moving the storage stuff somewhere else or whatever. Just go, if you've got a covered parking spot, that is something of great value that you're not going to start throwing stuff in and storing. So anyway, that's one thing that I just came up with. Then another thing, these lots were just divided up in 2017. And so it seems odd to me that these owners are not in communication with each other and couldn't get something developed so that we know what's going on with all four lots rather than one, where you're working with one right now and in another three months, or maybe as soon as this one's okayed, then the next guy comes in and it's going to be an all hodgepodge setup. And I mean, what it seems that you're doing now is you're doing like a spot zoning, you're changing the zoning in one lot on that whole street. I mean, it doesn't make sense to me, but then I am okay with something going up next door, but I just think it should be something that is going to work for the neighborhood and not make life worse for us. It should make life better, something nice to look at, and I'm okay with that. Something small. Christian once again said, the neighborhood there, it has cottage-like type homes. But this, to me, what you're got, I wouldn't call it a cottage. I mean, anything that you call cottage in there, it's one story, not two stories. So I'm okay with a two-story, but maybe there needs to be a little more setback or something so there's not so much mass so close up to the street. It goes two stories up, you know, right up in the front. And also, they had proposed, this developer, another plan, because you are out there, this is the third one that they proposed, and I have a paper here that shows what they originally...
You could give it to staff.
And it's, in my mind, a lot more cottage-like, and it has its two parking spaces rather than just one. So I think that what the commission needs to do is send these guys back to the drawing board, and hopefully they come back with something a little bit better. And like I say, I'm not opposed to developing a lot. I knew day one when I bought it, something would be going in there eventually, but...
Thank you very much. Cindy Abbott?
Hello, I'm Cindy Abbott, and I live directly across from the proposed development, and have never been reached out to the developer in all the years that they've been working on this. I'm also asking that the planning commission send this back to be reworked. The City of Pacifica is currently engaged in updates to the general plan and the local coastal plan, plus the development of a Sharp Park specific plan. These processes should be allowed to be completed prior to any rezoning changes or parking exemptions. This project overbuilds a three-bedroom house on a tiny 2,250-square-foot lot, not leaving appropriate space for onsite parking. While the staff report notes that it's likely the proposed project can safely develop without causing adverse neighborhood impacts, the comments don't seem to consider that it is four lots. All four lots developed in a similar way with one parking spot is going to be a really big problem. I'm very concerned about the precedent that this project will set. These parcels should not be approved piecemeal. There needs to be an overall strategy such as will be developed during the specific plan process. Staff statements that the number of additional vehicles, trips, and reasonableness of the proposed parking solution are contrived. How will a three-bedroom home generate a maximum of one trip during the morning and evening peak hours? Three bedrooms will likely mean a family or multiple adults who will absolutely generate more than one trip. The staff report states that at least three single-family residences have been developed on lots of the same size. What's misleading in this comment is each of those properties has a garage and/or off-site parking, onsite parking that allows for two or more vehicles on the site. It's a surprise to hear that we're concerned about developing homes with garages in front when it's directly observable that more than 75% or 80% of the homes in Pacifica have garages in front of their properties. Statements that this is going to dominate the architecture in relationship to the street seem to be manufactured to provide an excuse for this exception. Staff states that the off-street parking as proposed are nearly in compliance with the requirements as reasonably possible. That's a false statement. Similarly-sized lots have been developed with garages and on and off-street parking. It doesn't take a lot of imagination. You can just look up and down the street. There are problems with the development as proposed and how staff has addressed them. Parking exceptions have recently been given for projects along Palmetto, Francisco, and we need to pause while the Sharp Park specific plan is in process, consider the impact to the entire area, not this scattershot approach, and stop giving parking exceptions that are exasperating an already really overcrowded situation. Thanks.
Thank you. Mike McCarthy?
Good evening. So I also live in the neighborhood, you could say kitty corner from this proposed development. So I'm actually really shocked at the city. I'd almost say you're negligent. Past 30 years, you had four lots there that were supposed to be consolidated into two, and there was never an audit made over those nearly four decades. So I'd like that to be in the record. Maybe you guys need to take a look at that. There could be some other lots in the area that are subject to this. So it's, to me, it seems kind of suspicious. You know, I, also building upon what Cindy said to the developers here who do beautiful work here in town, I really admire all the work they've done, but I'm also a little surprised that they did not reach out to our community. I have other people here in our community who specifically reach out to the neighbors prior to a project like this to do some community building. So I'd really encourage you guys to do some community building in the future. I'm at a loss of words. I've many times praised their work, and to be sitting here tonight and just learning today that they're actually doing the work, a little surprising. They actually have a workshop around the corner from us, and have done some great work on our street in addition to it. So getting back to the actual aesthetics of this project, number one, I am concerned about the long-term vision for all four properties, and I'm a little surprised to hear that the, what the city was suggesting about the, about the specific plan for Sharp Park not being considered for that, and what the other four, the total four properties will be contributing to the full look of the neighborhood. I'm somewhat concerned about the parking, right? So if we have one parking here, and there's another parking put right next to it on the next proposed development that's going to come a year, two years down the road on the property to the side, or on the east or on the west, we need to have some type of long-term vision for what's going to happen with all four of those plots. So I very much encourage you guys to take a look at that. And I'm also concerned about the setback and the aesthetics of the building. It's somewhat of a sheer wall that comes up, and there's just a little bit of an awning in the front above the porch. If you take a look at 54 Salata, it's somewhat set back, and it has a bit of a feel that gives it more of a household look versus a sheer apartment. We have plenty of those sheer apartments on our street as well. So give it a little more of a scope. Appreciate your time, and please do consider what we're talking about tonight.
Thank you very much. Sandra Grossman?
Gosman.
Gosman. I am having trouble tonight.
Gosman in Salata. Hi, good evening. My name is Sandra Gosman, and although I support my neighbors, I'm not here to talk about the parking. I'm here very passionately about Salata. I have, I'm 61. I have owned this property for more than half my age, and Salata Avenue consists of cottages. Cottages, not modern, excuse me, not modern...
You need to speak into the mic.
Not modern two-rise homes. My concern is that the builder does not intend to live here. It's an investment. It's money. We all work really hard for our homes. I'm sure you all do. It's not about investment for us. These are our homes, and like I said, they're all cottages. I have to admit, my personal property on the corner of Salata and Beach Boulevard is the biggest monstrosity of all of them. It started out as a little one-bedroom cottage on the bottom. A second home for people when they used to go to Yosemite, and it got too hot, or they lived in Fresno, they came to Pacifica on the train to cool off. And then later on, somebody built a second story to it. That's my property. It's the biggest box. You can't miss it. The rest of them up and down Salata are cottages. They're all homes that we all live in. We're not investors. As far as the garages, I think that's irrelevant. Like, I don't want to point fingers, but we all have one-car garages, and how many people use their garages for storage? I don't know. I'm just saying. One-car garages, that's not why I'm here. I'm just here to tell you that Salata is quaint. I don't want to see it changed to be like a big monstrous house, one, two, three, whatever. I would have more compassion... I would have more compassion for him if he was going to live there, but the fact that he's not, sorry. We all live there, we've worked really hard, and I don't want to change the vibe or the feeling of our house. These are our homes, and I wish that you would consider that, because I think that the parking situation, and whether you use your garage for storage, or this or that or the other, that, that's irrelevant. These are our homes, and like I said, I am guilty of owning the biggest one on Salata and the corner of Beach and Salata. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alex Bennett?
Thank you, Commissioner, for the opportunity to speak. I heard earlier on that, in terms of the language of the staff report, that this was characterized as a compromise, and I think that isn't really a good word to use in this situation, because compromise talks about the idea of balancing two valid interests, and that's not what we have here. In terms of the impact to the neighborhood, I'm not going to go on, for the interest of time, in detail all the abuse of the parking situations there. Just this one project will take two parking spaces at a minimum where we are already, and if you notice from the floor plan, there are three essentially, that house can be occupied by three couples. And so that's going to be something more like half a dozen cars on top of the two spots that we're already losing. So I think there's a lot of misrepresentation on the parking issue. And then on the other side, looking at the root of this, we have an area right there that's zoned R2, which forbids building a single-family dwelling on a lot of that size. And the buyers bought that, they must have been aware of that. They must have been aware of that, and that is their sort of risk as developers, that they bought a property on which they cannot develop, and now they're in here either sweet talking or strong-arming the city to say, "Well, even though it's forbidden, let us build here anyway." And so I say caveat emptor. They should have thought of that when they bought it, rather than ask us to bend over in all the ways that you've heard, so they can have the privilege of building house. I think that what we need to look at this is, is that you are the city, and should you be taking care of the people that live in that neighborhood? Or are you going to take care of someone that wants to defecate in our neighborhood with this structure? Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. Sheldon Licardi?
Thank you again, my name is Sheldon Licardi. I live next door on 54 Salata. To give you some scope and perspective, my house is 1,278 square foot. It's a one-bedroom, one-and-a-half-bath with one-car garage. So currently, my wife and I live there, so we're a couple, we have two cars. One of us, my wife's car can fit in the garage, mine fits in the driveway. The extra space, the extra 100 square foot, would be approximately what the proposed development would be in size-wise. However, that would be an extra two bedrooms. So two bedrooms, is that two, four, six people perhaps? Two, four, three cars? Where are those cars going to go? What are you using that space for? Storage? I don't know. A car, a garage is for a car spot. So if you need storage needs, additional needs, you make storage needs, but it should be designated as a parking spot. So two, two spots, one-car garage and a parking spot in front of it. Also, I have an RV. My RV is 20 feet long, the setback is 18 feet. My RV would not fit in your proposed spot. It should be 20 feet, not 18. So that's basically my argument, just to give you some scope. As to the size of the lot, it's exactly the same as my house, one-bedroom, 1.5 baths, as opposed to three, three baths. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir. I have no more cards. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Please put, hand your card up, and then you can come up, and please announce your names.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is David Beaumont, and I am here representing a topic that's arisen multiple times this evening, the three adjacent property owners, the three adjacent lot owners. Let's start, there's quite a bit to pack within a couple of minutes, so I'll, first of all, really want to appreciate the feedback we've received tonight from the community members. I think it was very, very important to hear. I'm going to be conveying that to the owners. This process has just begun within the past week, two weeks, to form a collaborative approach. There's two owners of the three remaining properties, and we've had a preliminary interaction session with the city and got very good direction from them. They raised some issues of concern, some of which we've heard tonight, and actually, I'm very pleased to hear about the parking matter expressed by all the community members, because I perceived, apparently rightly so, that that would be a very, a very big and strong issue. So we're just beginning, literally at the inception of the conceptual design base, process. In fact, tomorrow afternoon, there's a meeting by the three owners, not the applicant. I'm familiar with the applicant, I have worked, interacted with them a couple of times. But I propose this with the three owners to get them to collaborate. They have different desires and different interests, but to get them to collaborate to iron out the very issues that are being raised by the community members this evening. In addition to that, I was, I also wanted to point out that, oh, two of the three houses of these, of these owners will be owner-occupied, or occupied by family members of theirs, two of them, and soon. There's really a lot of notes I've taken this evening. I'm happy to address any questions. I don't want to go past my time here, but thank you very much.
You do have another minute, and the commission can ask public speakers if they have questions of them. So go ahead and...
Well, I would just, just take a couple of notes from what the community members were saying. I've taken down every, every note by all of the members. I'm going to, as I said, I'll just reiterate, I will be conveying that at the preliminary conceptual design meeting tomorrow, expressing to them the very strongly felt concerns that they, that they have. And we're going to be taking a macro view of this, and I'm disappointed to hear, Mr. Penise, great respect to him, he built a terrific house, and I don't know how that occurred, but when I'm involved in a project, we, context-sensitive, community outreach starts from the beginning. So I'm sure I will have the opportunity to meet some of these owners, and happy to visit with them. At any time they do, I'll be giving them my contact information. I'm happy to answer any more questions you may have.
I do have a question. You're representing the other three lots, correct?
Correct, correct, yes.
Would you be willing to sit down with these owners and also include them in your collaboration?
Absolutely.
Thank you for that. Anybody else have a question? Commissioner Berman?
Just touching off of Commissioner Clifford's question, so do you represent the other owners as their attorney or developer assistant?
No, I'm a, I'm the principal planner with a design planning consultancy, and what we do, what we do is engagement with, with communities, conceptual plans, preliminary plans, site plans, and that's generally our scope, and the entire entitlement process.
Okay. So, and actually, this was brought up in another public comment. It's my understanding from the staff report that the lots could not be merged because there were no two adjacent property owners, is that correct?
That's correct.
So then I'm guessing the orientation is, to the west is one owner, then heading east is a different owner, then we have our applicant, and then another duplicate owner?
Yes, and to your point, even though they, they can't be merged, the two owners have agreed to collaborate. They don't, haven't seen eye-to-eye on a variety of things, but as an outgrowth of the meeting that we had with the city, with city staff, with city manager just, just days ago, I believe that we'll be able to put forward a program that addresses these issues at least in a collaborative fashion, so that issues that have arisen, that have been expressed tonight, can be addressed during the process, as opposed to, you know, as occurred here.
So then I guess, just because this is new to me, the idea of collaborating with an adjacent property owner, and then effectively merging lots to potentially build, would the owners kind of team up and purchase the land together?
No, 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 that's not enough. If that's the impression you got, perhaps that was a misimpression. No, collaborating in terms of site planning, in terms of citing the, the building, in terms of massing, in terms of building articulation, in terms of light and shadow, and daylight planes, and things of that issue, as well as how that impacts the adjacent existing owners who live here. So that's what I'm referring to.
Okay, so in understanding that you can't build over a property line, effectively the site planning would probably still be in total four separate structures?
Yes, when I say site planning, there are issues that can impact adjacent owners, such as light and air. These are traditional planning themes that are important to look at, even though they don't physically go past the property lines. They're still very important ones, and they're very sensitive to those who've lived here for 30-plus years, as some of these persons have said. So that's a, that's just as critical, even though it's not crossing the property line, you're having impacts beyond that. And another one was, was parking, taking away street parking, which we don't intend to do, and we're going to work very diligently at that. We perceive that that was going to be a, a strong issue, and I think it's obviously an extremely strong one.
Are you able to kind of lay out a high-level thought of how you would plan the four, three or four properties, if you had the opportunity?
Not at this, at this moment.
Okay, that's okay, just wondering.
We're just, we're getting, you know, this is a feedback-receiving process, and that's my purpose here tonight, by the way. So that would be far too preliminary for me to give you sort of a pro forma of that. No, we're not at that point yet.
Okay.
Hope to be soon, though.
I do have, I have one question. In collaborating and talking and working on this, would you be considering the possibility of some form of an easement to alleviate the parking issue, so that, like an easement for a circular driveway for all of, all of the buildings on those lots?
Specifically, in terms of your operative, I think adjective there was, was easement, or at least considering an easement, and yes, that was, I think, the first thing that arose a couple of weeks ago, and at the meeting with, with staff, we aired that potential or that possibility, and we're going to have to explore that. I think there's concern by staff of insufficient radii, or radiuses, to affect something that could actually meaningfully make a difference. That said, that was a high-level meeting in terms of a high elevation. We're going to now crank down to a lower, lower level and see if in fact something can be done. You know, an important element of that, this was raised at the meeting too, is smaller-sized cars, EV electric vehicles, much smaller wheelbases. It really is no longer just a, you know, a small trend, that's really where we're all going to be at, and so we're going to take a closer look at that. I've, I've worked in challenging areas where taking a very, very close look at that actually helped, in, in terms of issues like that very thing, radii and curves and turns and things of that nature. So, but yes, that's not, that is certainly within the wheelhouse of thought as to seeing if that's, if that's going to benefit the design, if that's going to benefit the existing community members.
Thank you so very much for coming forward and for also answering our questions. I appreciate it. Anybody else have any additional questions? Thank you again, sir.
You're welcome.
And Chair, I'll be bringing up one written public comment that was submitted to staff as well.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to ask the applicant to come back up. You'll have three minutes to speak to. Rebut anything you've heard?
Well, I just want you guys to not, you know, miss the opportunity to actually look at the plan that we provided. I know this meeting seemed to be all about parking, but I do feel like we created something along with Christian that was different, and would add a uniqueness to the neighborhood. And also, I am the owner, and I am planning on keeping the property, whether I'm going to rent it to a friend, or a relative, or one of my kids is unknown. So I don't know what the relevance to that is, because obviously some nice person is going to end up living there. And all we're really trying to do is develop a piece of property, and we've been working really hard with the City of Pacifica, and like, we're open to some input, but we've really gotten no guidance. I did submit another project two years ago with a two-car garage, or a carport, and a two, and a one-car garage, and it was made known to me that the city was going to go away from that sort of design in the new general plan, and we would love to wait for the new general plan, but that doesn't seem like that's going to happen for another year or two, and we've already got two years into, you know, trying to come up with a desirable functional house for the property. So I still feel like this house is close to what should be there, and I don't really want to see garages. I know we talked about cottages and all kinds of stuff. I'm super vested in this community, and I work really hard to make houses look nice, and I don't want to see more garages with cars in front of them and doors on the side of the house, and then that's kind of what that neighborhood is. So anyways, I guess I still have 39 seconds, but I'm done.
Okay. I have a question for you.
Yeah.
We have heard that the other three, oh, the other three properties, the two other owners are starting to work collaboratively. Would you be interested, willing to work with those, with those owners on a more comprehensive use of that property that might be able to solve some of the parking issues that are arising?
I'd love to say no, but I don't think there's, I mean, there's four 20-foot-wide lot, 25-foot-wide lots, so there's no real resolution. We've already talked about doing a joint driveway, me and Christian, and putting the parking in the back. You can't do it because you can't get a turn, you can't get the 25 feet that you need to turn a car around. So the bottom line is, each lot's faced with a two-car garage in the front, or not having a two-car garage in the front. So part of what, and I don't want to throw Christian under the bus, but part of what Christian and I had come up with is this concept that we're really not losing parking, because we're saving a spot on the street and we're adding a spot in front of the house. And the house was obviously going to have that. If you look closely at that house, the backyard, the side yard, the front yard, everything's super-functional, and that's what we were trying to achieve. I even didn't put a walkway down the front of the house, because I was thinking of the front yard being a usable space, so people could walk on the side of the driveway, and, you know, it's a pretty well-thought-out house. Now, whether it's too big, or it's, you know, it's definitely not too tall, I think the overall mass is... not too tall, I think the overall mass is 23 feet. But if we're, there's, I mean, the only thing we could do is maybe put a parking garage, and I don't, I don't, I don't know what could be obtained.
The question was, sir, would you be willing to sit down with the other property owners and look at making some changes that would make everything better for all, all of the neighbors, yourselves included?
Um.
And you started out with a no, and then?
We've already done that, and like I said, I don't know if there's much to look at, and if, if people aren't willing to merge lots and give up easements and do things like that, everybody, you know, I personally, right now, I have two years into this, and I, two full designs, and I just want to keep going forward, whether tonight moves me forward or not, you know, so be it, but I want to, you know, just keep moving forward.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
No.
Commissioner Berman?
Not a question, I was ready to deliberate.
Okay, well, we have, I have to bring it back to the-
Okay, okay, sorry.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir. Okay, and I am now going to bring it back to the Commission for Deliberations, and Commissioner Berman, your light was first.
Sorry if I beat anyone to it. Okay, so, granted, these are just kind of my opinions, but partially why I'm here is to represent a different demographic for Pacifica. I think trying to add housing to the community is needed. I think there's vacant land that is going underutilized. It's not like it's quite a park or anything, granted, it's open space, but given the, the housing issues in the Bay Area, I think adding housing's helpful. In my opinion, looking at four separate lots, I'm probably not as creative as others, but I'd imagine the most efficient way to get housing in the lots, in that space, is either an apartment complex, which I don't think the community wants, or effectively small homes that could hopefully house multiple people. I know people in Pacifica that rent rooms in a house, and it's very beneficial to them. Parking-wise, I could see three different situations for parking. There's the two-car garage or two driveway, two-car driveway, which effectively cuts out the entire 25-foot width of the front lot, which does not help serve the community. If there is a one-car garage and a one-car driveway, whoever's living there does have the opportunity to use that garage as storage, so that's kind of a, a risk, I guess you could say, parking-wise. I think, given that the possible garage space of this home is used to potentially provide another bedroom for someone, is a good use of area, and it also provides the one off-street parking spot with one public on-street parking spot that the public could use. So, in general, I'm in favor for this project.
Commissioner Nebelen?
Thank you. I firstly just want to say that I, I think that Commissioner Berman has done a, really a outstanding job of sort of articulating kind of the factors at play, and I think she actually pretty well states my position. I had a couple of questions that I wanted to run past staff, and one was, how wide, assuming a single-car driveway, how, how wide is that driveway, how, how wide is it supposed to be? I know it's in the plans, but I couldn't-
The zoning standard for a one-car driveway establish, establishes a minimum width of 10 feet.
10 feet. I guess another question, is it illegal to park in front of your own driveway?
I don't know the answer to that question.
That's a question for, I guess, the city attorney, then. I, just sort of curious about sort of the potential for actually having a couple spaces if you block your own. I see it in the city, in San Francisco, with some regularity, I just sort of curious about that and the potential for freeing up spaces that way.
I would have to look into that.
I'd be interested in knowing the answer. You know, a lot of important thoughts that were shared, and a lot of important concerns. I think in a perfect world, perhaps we figure out a way to sort of, maybe a slightly smaller, slightly smaller structure. I think, though, that the structure that's proposed is, is satisfactory, in my, in my view. The particular legislative actions that are proposed here seem appropriate. It is unfortunate, I think the city had initiated the lot merger process many years ago, and unfortunately, for reasons that are unclear at this point, it was never completed. At this point, you've got separate owners of the separate lots, and they aren't lots that are in public ownership, they're privately-owned lots that kind of, right at some juncture, be developed. Whether or not, you know, private, whether or not the developer himself is going to occupy, I don't think is necessarily a relevant point. I agree with that, with that matter. I think that housing is needed, regardless of who built it and who owns it. So, I'm in favor of the proposal set forth in the staff report, and I, I don't know that we gain much by sort of waiting for other things to necessarily catch up.
Thank you. Commissioner Rigstick?
Thank you. It doesn't, to my sensibility, inherently matter who's living there, whether it's the owner or otherwise. In my mind, what I'm trying to get at more is if there's somebody in front of me who can tell me what their intended use of the place they're moving into is, and that's where my thought process goes. When the owner says that it's going to be kept closer to his sphere, then that answers the question to my mind as to whether or not this is going to be sold to somebody who maybe has a Tesla they want to keep in the garage, or some other higher-priced vehicle. After all, property values being what they are lately, first thought is, if this is being sold to somebody for probably not a small amount of money, and by extension has, say, a vehicle not worth a small amount of money, they may not at want immediately deteriorated by the sea breeze. Then after that, there's the more practical element of parking in general. One of our commenters made the comment that they could foresee a half a dozen spots being necessitated by three bedrooms, and while I think that that's probably hyperbolic, the point is also taken that if there's three bedrooms in use, the reason I want to know who's living there isn't so much that inherently matters, except for insofar as there winds up being a practical matter. If the idea is that a family moves in and has children who will need cars, maybe not a half a dozen cars, but that could be three cars right there. And we have one spot, two spots if it's not being used over the course of a weekend where we have tourists, as was commented on by the neighbors. So, with the garage, you could have somebody in the garage, you can some, have somebody then in the driveway, so it's coordinated, and then you have the spot outside of the house. And now, we're talking about three spots for a family with maybe three cars. So, that's what I'm getting at more than whether or not there's an inherent value to who's living there, it's more, there's a logistical value to who's living there. And with that being a question mark, then I lean more one way than another. After that, we had a lot of speakers speaking to I in various ways. This speaks to the question of whether or not this development would be in character with the rest of the neighborhood. If this was a two-bedroom development instead of a three-bedroom development, then the one spot on and one spot off makes more sense to me. If they're telling me that there's already parking issues, I'm not living there, but the more than half a dozen people who came to speak are, and I have to take that seriously. After that, as the building itself, I don't have any particular problem with it. I have that concern about zoning, which would be addressed by the general plan, but if not for that major parking concern, probably I could easily vote yes. As it stands, it's hard for me to vote yes, and right now, I'm kind of leaning toward no, because at least half the neighborhood decided to show up to tell me what a bad idea it is. And I kind of agree with a lot of their points.
Okay. Commissioner Kreske?
Yes. I think ideally, I'd like to see, you know, an overall uniform strategy for, for development for these, these four parcels. I think the, the onus is on the city for that. However, it seems like that's going to be a good one to two years out, until the general plan is updated, and I think there'll be a missed opportunity here. These, we are in the midst of a housing crisis, so I think this is a, I think this project took some, some thought, was in collaboration with the city, it's fairly innovative design. And I think I could get on board with this project as it is.
Okay. And Commissioner Rubenstein?
Would changing the zoning to R3 for this lot be a precedent for the other lots, the other three lots?
I mean, I defer to the city attorney, but I'm not aware what precedent would be established. It's a independent legislative action to change the zoning, and it's up to the council to have a rational basis to make the change or not to make the change.
That's correct. You would have to share that the zoning is beneficial to the community, and the staff report makes that determination.
Yeah, that's what I figured. I just wasn't sure if there was some argument that could be made later by the other property owners, that they have a right to, to change it to R3 as well. So, I think generally speaking, I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of this project. I think the, the parking situation as it is, is faced by many communities, and, you know, halting development because of parking limitations is not, in my mind, a reasonable reason to, to, you know, to deny a project's merit on the other points that it's really been based on. So, I agree with my colleagues with regard to approval of this project.
Commissioner Nebelen?
Thank you. There was actually one other point that I, I believe you, Commissioner Clifford, had, had been sort of kicking around with the staff, and that pertained to the length of the parking space. And I think we had talked about 18 versus 20, I, I see 18 feet in the staff report, and then a suggestion that perhaps we could, in fact, recommend 20 feet without significantly impacting the, the design as we have it. And I guess that was sort of the notion of vehicles much bigger than any that I've ever owned, but sort of making sure that we had enough space to, to, to ensure that a vehicle actually felt, you know, fit within the, within the space. I wasn't sure if that was something that continued to be of concern or, or not. If so, I would want to make sure that we had a big enough space to ensure that it was big enough for any vehicles that might be owned by anybody who were to, to occupy the home. That's more of a comment, I guess, but I don't know if staff's got anything else to say, but we have a recommendation as to that point.
I think it, from staff's perspective, it's a reasonable concern. Certainly, the minimum front setback from the front property line to a garage is 20 feet. 18 feet is suitable for smaller parking spaces, including the compact parking space dimensions, but if you're concerned about other than a compact vehicle being parked there, you know, increasing the front setback to 20 feet seems reasonable to me. The commission may wish to hear from the applicant as, as to what impact it would have. It's not always so simple as just shrinking a room two feet. There are concerns about maximum steepness, if you will, of staircases and so forth, that could be affected by shrinking the dimensions of a structure, so it, it might be helpful to hear from, from the applicant in that regard.
Well, I'd ask the Chair, perhaps, for the limited purpose of addressing that specific point, I would be interested in knowing whether or not the applicant had anything to say about it.
Would the applicant like to come up and answer that question, please?
So, one of the things I guess we could do is shrink the porch. I know me and Christian actually, at one point, had the parking space 16 with the planner behind it, and figuring a car could, you know, back up over part of the planner. I would imagine it's, it's feasible, I don't know whether it's, it's necessary. What are we at now, Christian, to the front porch? I don't have, I don't know if you have that in front of you.
I believe that's the, well, just give me a minute to check.
And just since, since I'm up here, I did call the lower room a flex room. I didn't, I didn't really see this as being a three-bedroom house, but I know.
So, it's 18 feet from the front property line to the front overhang of the porch, and another four feet from the front of the porch to the front of the structure. As the applicant indicated, that porch was six feet previously. I think it's staff's perspective or opinion that a sizable front porch is a helpful architectural element to break up some of that vertical plane that some of the community members commented on. The applicant did reduce it from six feet to four feet in order to achieve the rear setback during staff's review of the project.
Maybe I can ask my question a little bit differently, or frame things a little bit differently. I'm, I've got like a RAV4, would that fit in the space that we're talking about right now?
I don't know the dimensions, but the RAV4 is not a particularly long vehicle, in my opinion, and I think it would fit.
Most of my trucks are about, you know, maybe 20, and they're like four-door, you know, Ford, four-door trucks, so I think, I think most cars are six. A parking spot in a, in a building is nine by 19, so it's not, 20 foot's not what's required in a garage, it's 19 feet. So, we're about one foot off of a required parking space. And I would be, you know, I wouldn't have a problem shrinking the house by a foot, or shrinking the porch, or, you know, accommodating it. It would, it would just be a matter of whether we really felt it was necessary. I guess we would need a list of cars and-
Yeah, I'm, I'm not interested in designing any sort of idiosyncratic who's going to live there. I'm interested in sort of generally what might be reasonable to have. If, if a typical parking space is 19 feet, then it strikes me that that probably would be an appropriate guideline for us to use.
And Director Waremeister has confirmed that a 2019 RAV4 is approximately 15 feet long.
Good old Google.
And to the point made by one of the public commenters, parking of oversized vehicles like RVs, it's not permitted under the city zoning. So, although they are out there in driveways, they are in violation of the zoning, and so, I think it's unlikely that you should expect or plan around such a large vehicle being in a driveway.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Commissioner Berman?
Just because it was brought up, I do have a minor opinion on the length of the off-street parking. So, I work in land development, and many cities, the exterior parking length is 18 feet. So, like, an ADA parking stall is typically nine feet wide, 18 feet deep, just for context, in case that helps. And also, it looks like, not that I'm encouraging crossing the property line, but it does look like the property line is inset with respect to the sidewalk as well. So, I mean, if there's concern with blocking the sidewalk, it does look like there's a little bit of space between the property line and the back of the sidewalk to alleviate some concerns. Also, just looking at the setbacks around the house, it looks like there's really nowhere to move, except for decreasing the house size, which I think senior planner Murdoch kind of pointed out, you know, the stair steepness could be an issue. Driveway steepness could be an issue, but I don't think there's too much elevation change here. So, personally, I think 18 feet would be sufficient for this house.
And Chair, if I could, perhaps it's possible as well to- Chair, if I could, perhaps it's possible as well to consider requiring the concrete porch, at least for that portion on the east side of the structure, to be at grade and designing the structural supports for the porch, perhaps such that the vehicle could nose in under the porch, for instance, rather than, you know, assume that it's exclusively outside of that 18 feet.
Okay. Since I brought this whole question up in the beginning to with a question to staff, I want to sort of restate what my position was. My position was and my concern was is that nobody park in the sidewalk. I think the 18 feet for the driveway is sufficient as long as people who wind up living near know that they can't park over the sidewalk. That was my only real concern with the 18 feet. So if that educates anybody on what I was thinking, that, you know, I'm not uncomfortable with the 18-foot driveway. I just wanted it out there that that sidewalk is for people. Okay. Any, Commissioner Nebelen?
Well, unless there's further discussion, I'm ready to make a motion.
One quick note, just for future projects, I would encourage you to, you know, work with your neighborhood residents and give them fair notice. I think that's really important, the community involvement piece, and I think that's a little bit lacking here. So future projects, I would encourage you to reach out to your neighborhood.
Yeah, and I can appreciate that. This was a really fast-paced, you know, second round, and we, you know, we got the prep plans. Christian gave us a date and tried to expedite it, and we literally, you know, maybe submitted those plans or the final version, you know, maybe a month ago. And up until then, it was just kind of a, you know, up in the air. We talked about all sorts of different ways of getting to, you know, the general plan amendment and the right strategy and, you know, if there had been a little bit more time, I think I would have had a chance to get to know some of the neighbors. But also, I've been super busy, but I can appreciate that, and I think it makes sense and it's fair.
Thanks.
Commissioner Bigstick.
I wind up very much in the middle because I'm hearing everything my fellow commissioners are telling me. I'm not really seeing much to disagree with. That flex space downstairs, when I read that, I wasn't quite sure what to make of it, honestly, except that it seemed to indicate in the final analysis I should regard it as a bedroom. And the feedback of the neighbors are taken to heart. And so I'm going to be voting no personally in this instance, not because I don't see a very pressing need for housing, not because the design plan itself I find any particular flaw in, except the parking is of concern, and it's very much of concern, especially in lieu of the entire neighborhood coming out to tell me we're concerned too. So it just pushes me right over the edge of that line, and that's all I have to say about that. Thank you for being here.
No, I appreciate that. Like, I live on Livingston, and I have a 10-foot wide driveway, and I park two vehicles on the street.
I'm going to cut you off because I still haven't made my comment.
Go for it. Cut me off. Do I need to be here? Should I go sit down?
You do not have to be there. I don't think you need to be here for my...
I'm done?
You're done.
All right.
Okay, my turn, and then we can go for motions. Okay. When I looked at this project, I mentioned my one concern about the sidewalk, and I have heard the public say that parking in that area is, can be, a real bear, and that there is also, and right now, a boom in the number of teenagers who are going to be drivers, and of course, that does generally mean more cars, but not necessarily. Sometimes they get to share the car. But the thing with teenagers is they actually do continue to grow up and go away, so they're not necessarily going to be long-term in pact on the parking in that area. I was thrilled to hear that the other property owners are talking about collaborating and working to solve some of these problems in the future, and I do get and understand why the applicant would prefer not to put the brakes on his current project to fold himself into that discussion, which would mean he doesn't get to build anything for a couple of years, and that's, you know, he's put a lot of work in. So the, in the end, I am going to support this project, and that's where I'm at in terms of, and I want to make one final comment is that the city council is going to get to make the final determination on this, and they will, I'm sure, take into account the public's response and also the fact that the other property owners are doing something different, and they'll decide whether or not that this project will actually go forward. But I am willing to make the recommendation that it go to city council. So that's where I'm at. So I'm ready for a motion. Commissioner Nebelen.
Thank you. I'd like to move that the Planning Commission finds the project as exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, adopts the resolution included as attachment A to the staff report to approve site development permit PSD 81817, coastal development permit CDP 38717, use permit UP 11619, and parking exception PE 17417, subject to conditions of approval in Exhibit A of the resolution, and to recommend city council adoption of the ordinance included as Exhibit B of the resolution to approve general plan amendment GPA 9719 and rezoning RZ 20219, and incorporates all maps and testimony into the record by reference.
And I, sorry, I looked away, and now I have two, two lights. I'm going to go with Commissioner Rubenstein.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Please vote. And that passes five to one. So it, you are now recommended to move on to the city council, and there's no need to read the disclaimer and appeal stuff because it's going to city council anyway.
Well, Chair, to be clear, unless appealed or called up by a council member, the Planning Commission's actions on the development permits would be final. The city council in any instance will act on the legislative items, the general plan amendment and the rezoning. Should those be denied, even though the Planning Commission approves the development permits, then the development permits would take no effect. But otherwise, without an appeal or call-up, the commission's approval of the development permits could be final.
Okay. Well, thank you for that clarification. So I will read. Anyone agree by the action of the Planning Commission has 10 calendar days to appeal the decision in writing to the city council. And moving on to the next item on our agenda, we are now, bum, 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 bum. We've had our two hearings. We are now into commission communications. Any, Commissioner Bigstick?
Sure. So I attended the first Plan Pacifica meeting to get the ball rolling on the general plan process. I saw my fellow commissioners, Berman and Clifford, there, and there were five meetings, so I imagine that everyone had plenty of time to attend one. It was a good meeting. It was good to see a process started with the community, to walk amongst the community while they were having civil discourse. At times later in these planning processes, when things seem more dire, the discourse can turn not as civil, so it was good to begin the process well-rooted in civility and conversation. And got a little more information out than I had before, and I'm hoping that the joint study session coming up will be mentioned by city staff tonight. Cool. So I'm very much looking forward to that part of the process going forward.
Commissioner Nebelen.
Thank you. So I served as the commission liaison to the city council meeting at which the appeal of the Beach Boulevard project, I'm forgetting the address at this point, but it's...
1567.
Thank you, 1567. That was approved by three votes here at the Planning Commission. It went to the city council where the appeal was denied, again, on a 3-2 vote. So that, just wanted to report back the disposition of that matter.
And I want to thank you for sitting through that. It was, I watched it on TV. It was quite...
Absolutely painless, I said.
You absolutely, you could have, could have not been there and accomplished just as much.
Indeed.
Okay, next, anybody else? Commissioner Rubenstein.
Commissioner Clifford, do we talk about our visit to the Marymount?
I think we can acknowledge that we've done it.
Okay. We've done it.
And, and yes, we did do our inspection of the Marymount. What's the other half of that address, the name? It's Marymount.
Gateway.
And Gateway Apartments, we've done that. And there will be a report at some future date. Staff will probably tell us when they get to it. And yes, I also went to the Plan Pacifica meeting, and it was, it was really nice to see people come out and make comments and try to build a better Pacifica, get their ideas about what Pacifica needs in its general plan and its specific plans, and so on and so forth. If there's nobody else, I'm going to move on to staff communications.
Thank you. So the Marymount item, we'll be coming back to you probably the second meeting in August is what we're targeting. The last council meeting, the council did hear the fitness center text amendment, and they did approve the text amendment with a change to require that all fitness centers of any size need a use permit. And it was, the reason for that primarily was a concern of over, possible over-concentration of non-sales tax generating uses in shopping centers, so it wasn't an issue with the use of fitness center in and of itself. And they, they did state that if the concentration issue could be resolved some way in the future, possibly through the general plan process, that they would, would be willing to revisit that to make it easier for smaller businesses to get going in shopping centers, smaller fitness businesses. So as was mentioned, I want to give a big thank you and commendation to Senior Planner Christian Murdock for the general plan, local coastal plan, and specific plan outreach. We had five meetings over the course of about three weeks. We had a total of, I'm not sure if repeats, there was a lot of repeats, and I think that just shows how good the meetings went. But there was about 250 participants, and I think that is a good record for some of the public participation in these types of community meetings in our community, so I think that that was really excellent. And following up from those meetings, we are scheduling a joint session with Planning Commission and City Council. It's part of the scope of work for our consultant, and so we're looking to do that on a council night. It would be Monday, August 26th. We're still, of course, setting the agenda, but we believe that will be an early start, either 5:30 or 6:00. And we'll be reporting back on what we've heard at the community meetings, as well as getting feedback on some of the next steps and a variety of other items related to what's coming up with that important project. So that's all I have.
Thank you very much. I think we've come to that time in the meeting. If I have a motion? Ah, Commissioner Bigstick.
I will make the motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Kreske.
I second that motion.
We have a motion in a second. Please vote. Gee, nobody wants to stay. That passed unanimously. Thank you very much, and good night.
Well done. Excellent.